One o'clock, I'll call this monthly meeting to the Juneau City Council to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the clerk call roll, please.
Brown.
Here.
Evan.
There.
Fuddy.
Here.
Grattan.
Here.
Shanks. Schuster.
Here.
Eric Wagner.
Here.
First item of business would be approval of the agenda. Motion to that effect.
Okay.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, is there a motion to approve minutes of the previous meetings?
No.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Grattan. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of intervening meetings?
No.
Okay.
Motion by Fuddy, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next, we have a public hearing for the proposed application for the CDBG CL Public Funds Program. I'll turn it over to Mike Lau, our contracted engineer from MSA, to walk us through the program.
Thank you. This public hearing is regarding a proposed application for community development block grant public facilities, commonly referred to as CDBG dash PF. Bear with me as I read the minimum required information and text for this funding program. The basic overview of the CDBG program. CDBG was enacted through the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. The Wisconsin Department of Administration, commonly referred to as DOA, has administered CDBG funds since 1982. Its goals include benefit to low and moderate income, referred to as LMI households. It targets funding to areas of greatest need, promotes improvements to housing, public facilities, and economic development. There are six agenda items for discussion tonight. Number one, identification of total potential funds. DOA historically receives approximately 25 million, general estimate, estimate, per year through competitive grants for housing rehabilitation, public infrastructure improvements, including water sewer, storm sewer, et cetera, emergency infrastructure, and economic development in exchange for job creation. Through the CDBG close program, the DOA has released approximately 100 million to units of government who previously had CDBG Economic Development revolving loan fund programs. Dodge County is one of those recognized to have 1.6 million in closed funding available. Item number two, eligible CDBG activities. Economic development. Low interest loans to business in exchange for job creation. B, public facilities. Water facilities, including mains, looping, extensions, treatment, source, hydrant, valves, sewage, including collector and interceptor mains, lift stations, treatment plants and lagoons, and dechlorination facilities, storm sewers, fire stations, libraries, senior centers, handicapped accessibility, and community centers. C, public facilities for economic development. Business or industrial park water systems, sewage systems, roads, infrastructure, all in support of business attraction, expansion, and job creation. D, planning grant. The program's goals are to help communities develop clear and actionable strategies for addressing site-specific neighborhood, community, or regional economic or development needs, and to improve the quality of community or economic development projects by helping to fund local plans. E, housing. Rehabilitation for owner-occupied and renter-occupied units. LMI home buyer, referred to as homestead programs, handicapped accessibility projects, housing site preparation, housing site acquisition, and occupant relocation, light elimination through demolition of structures, and neighborhood public facility projects. F, CDBG close. This program utilizes remaining fund balances and loan receivable from economic development revolving loan funds for CDBG eligible projects. These funds must be committed by January 31st, 2021. The city of Juneau has been allocated $700,000 by Dodge County through this fund for the Highland Street project. Agenda item number three, presentation of identified community development needs. I need to ask any comments from the council members regarding our other community issues that may fall into the CDBG funded activities that I just described. Are there any comments or any issues that anyone wants to bring to mind? Hearing none, I'll go on to number four. Identification of any community development needs by the public. Likewise, from anybody attending from the public attending tonight's presentation, is there any comments of any issues regarding other uses of CDBG eligible funds? Hearing none, I'll go on to number five. Presentation of activities proposed for CDBG application, including potential residential displacement. The proposed use of the current funds is being allocated to the Highland Street project, starting at East Oak Grove Street on the south and continuing north to East Center Street. The project includes full reconstruction of sanitary sewer, water, storm, and street, including curb and gutter, driveway aprons, sidewalk, and street pavement. Last, item number six, citizen input regarding proposed and other CDBG activities. I need to ask three times if there's any additional comments from any of the citizens present. Any additional citizen comments? Lastly, any additional citizen comments? Hearing none, that concludes my presentation.
No, Sean, am I understanding this right? We're supposed to open up a public hearing here to ask these same questions?
Let's see, and that was the opening.
That was the opening forum here.
So it's needed to close it.
This time, is there a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting? Motion by Fuddy. Second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Any questions for Mr. Lau in regards to this? You want to give us a rundown on, for the people that don't know, that may be watching, on how these funds were procured and what the counties, how the county decided what went where?
Yeah, again, these funds were committed by the state to communities and counties in Wisconsin to promote economic development. There were revolving loan funds that were, where money was given out to eligible participants, could be businesses and other entities, in the hopes of creating jobs. Over the years, this program has produced a lot of positive development, but as of late, the program had kind of been diminishing and kind of revolving on the same loans that had been in existence for a number of years. The county was one of the participants, as was the city of Juneau. The city of Juneau already allocated their funds to a project on South Main Street previous year. So now the county is getting towards the end of the allocation period here, which ends July 31st, and they need to do something with their funds. They've got approximately $1.6 million in funds. The county board has passed a resolution that they will allocate their money to three communities, three willing communities that have eligible CDBG projects. The city of Juneau, they were allocating $700,000. City of Beaver Dam, $500,000. And the city of Horicon, $400,000. With that, the communities are asked to pay to the county as a primer 20% of the allocated funds. So in Juneau's case, the $700,000 grant, the city would have to pay $140,000 to the county, and would still give us a net of $560,000. So it's a good opportunity for the city as long as we have an eligible project. Well, this past fall, there was a survey, income survey done on Highland Street and East Oak Street, and the Highland Street project qualified as a CDBG eligible project. So that is the project that is allocated for this program. Approximate cost of the project was estimated at about $1 million last fall. So $560,000, which would be the net here, would be allocated towards that project. And again, it would be full replacement of all of the public utilities, sewer, water, storm, and also street curb and gutter sidewalks, driveway aprons. So it's a great opportunity, I believe, for the city.
Can I ask how the county decided to split? How did it determine which community received what?
Yeah, I allocated, or I advocated for the city of Juneau to receive as much money out of this 1.6 as we could. Originally, they were thinking of doing a project on their own to replace an elevator at one of the facilities of the county. That went by the wayside. Originally, there was going to be that elevator project, and then two communities might be allocated money. Well, the elevator project went away, and they decided to allocate to three communities. And I'm not sure how the final numbers came out, but I was happy to hear that the city of Juneau got the greatest portion of the money.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike?
Right, we have to commit to this completely by the end of January, correct? January 31st for this?
Yeah, what we need is a resolution accepting relapment, and in the resolution that city would remit funds equal to 20% of the allocated grant amount. I don't know, is that on the agenda tonight?
It is not on the agenda tonight, no.
So we're going to have to have a special meeting to approve it, correct?
Correct, yeah. Because I think your last email, we weren't sure what, how quickly we need to distribute that 20% and everything else, so.
We still don't. We recommended that it be 90 days after completing the award agreement with the DOA. And we're in the process of putting together that application now, so I'm not sure when that would occur. But the county agreed with that in principle, although they didn't have anything in writing. So we're asking for some clarification in writing on when that money would be due. But at this point, it seemed like there was a head nod of yes when we recommended a 90-day-after-the-award-completion agreement signed with the DOA.
Any other questions? Thank you, Michael. Appreciate your efforts. Moving on, communications. Anything for the clerk, can you?
No, not at this time.
I guess why Mike's here. I see they have started on the ditching project there, paralleling the electric substation. Anything to report on that one?
Yes, the actual ditching is all the way complete, all the way from the bottom end connection to the mainline ditch, all the way up to where we ended with the street project at the corner of the intersection by the substation there on West Kin Street. What they're doing today, and I don't know, I haven't been back to see if they finished or not, is just working some of that dirt into the field, and then also any extra stuff up into the the storage yard that we had started behind the substation there. So basically cleaning up the site. The ditch has been dug, and it's been covered with erosion mat, and it'll be seeded then in spring, and hopefully everything will start to grow then.
What's on the line after communications? Next, we have approved payments of bills, checks for $121,465.43. No vouchers, electronic transfers of $174,326.31. Is there a motion to approve payments of bills? Motion by Schuster, second by Grattan. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, roll call, vote please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evan.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Payments of bills have been approved. Next, we have public appearances and citizens' comments regarding agenda items. What the record showed, there is nobody in attendance.
We have one person online.
Oh, excuse me. Good evening. Wish to speak at the council meeting thing? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, reports of officials. I have nothing more to report. Clerk pressure?
We do have a preliminary election, February 16th, I believe it is. We do have three council members who are re-running again this year. Alderman Shanks, Alderman Grattan, and Orderwoman Brown. However, there is no preliminary election for those positions, so they'll move directly onto the April ballot as of this time. We do have auditors scheduled to come, or to prepare our financials. I believe beginning February 8th, they will be doing majority of that online and virtually due to COVID, as we are all aware. Other than that, so we've just been busy preparing for those, for the auditors.
Okay, any questions for the clerk? No written reports, we're only going to report, any questions on those? We have no police, you know, fire and rescue, or EMS report, again, was not a meeting last month. Next, we have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll start off with the library report for Jeanette.
All right, I'm moving this close so that you can see this gift basket. Can you see it? Yeah. I'm sure there's video around it. So this is one of two gift baskets that patrons can sign up to win in the month of January. We're doing a reading challenge. It's called Wonderful Winter Reading Challenge. And it launched on the first, and patrons can, anytime throughout the month of January, check out and read three books. And on the honor system, they come back and say, yes, I read those books. And then they can enter to win either the pancake morning gift basket, or we also have one called Snow Day. Now, these are meant to be attractive for the very young and the very old. So even though I might not necessarily play with the pancake set, I do have grandchildren, and I do have neighbors of a young age. So this is meant to kind of be a generational gap type of prize that you can share with family. Of course, there's pancake mix and syrup and things as well. And the Snow Day one has Domino's Pizza gift card, and all those things that come in handy if you have a snow day. So come on out to the Juneau Public Library, check out some books, read at least three of them, and you can get entered into our wonderful winter reading challenge prize. So with that said, I'm going back to some December things to wrap up. You know that we did the Parade of Trees. Now, the Parade of Trees is not a library event, but we are the host. And so this was the 24th year for the Juneau Chamber of Commerce's Parade of Trees. And the 23rd year, it's been hosted at the library. I'd like to personally thank Dodgeland FFA students and alumni, along with Dave Grattan, for their work in picking up the trees out of storage, setting them up, and then just this past Saturday, tearing them down and putting them back in storage. There were 13 trees, and if you set up one in your own home, you know that's a project. So thank you personally, Dave, and the FFA students and alumni. I'd also like to thank Mary Webster-Abbotz, who coordinated this event this year. She worked very well with library staff. We had a lot of pandemic issues to think about. How do we socially distance? And not just the people viewing, but the people decorating too. We wanted it to be safe and enjoyable for all. So thank you to all of the Juneau people that sponsored and decorated and set up and tore down trees. We were thankful we were able to do that. Also, there was a virtual piece. So I'm thankful for the Juneau Cable TV station that filmed a virtual parade of trees, and for one of the Chamber of Commerce's directors, Richard Lowe, who narrated that virtual tour. So thank you for all involved. And then finally, the countdown to Christmas was something that we did in partnership with Cable TV as well. 24 readers, and it's really cool. 17 of those 24 were brand-new readers. They had never participated in this program before. Two of them were your two new police officers. One of them was Juneau's new Park Interact Director. Even myself, after year three, I finally got involved and read a book myself. Several new businesses or staff from businesses, Chamber of Commerce members, and, this is cool, Santa and Mrs. Claus even read a book. So we were thankful to do this again for the third year. And I did some stat collecting, and 589 people viewed those storytimes. So I don't think I would have had that many people at my library at one time for a live story reading. So you can see how we reached our public through that event. So thank you for supporting the library, and it's fun to be a part of a community and a community effort and so many things. Thanks.
Any questions for Judith?
Jeanette, it's okay if you want to play with those pancake things. If I have to.
It's not, I know, they're Velcro and they're fun. And it's not for old people, young at heart. I'll set them aside for you, Cheryl.
That's great.
And Jeanette, you said you've been here three years?
I have officially been here three years, just started in November, my fourth.
Okay, then there's no excuse for not knowing where to stand when you're presenting, so that the camera doesn't have to work.
You just wanted the gift basket close to you. Next time, I'll hit it.
Bet you'll come up here next time too, won't you?
Well.
Very good. Moving on, land mission. David?
We did meet. We had a public hearing for Zach Ryan. He owns the truck shop on West Oak Grove Street, 287. 278 West Oak Grove Street. And we discussed with him the conditional use permit. We discussed the fence that he had proposed putting up. He says he's still going to get that fence up to height his trucks. And we got down to the end of it, and we agreed that he could have this. And we found out that we couldn't pass it because it got missed on there. So we'll have to meet with him next month to do the final action on his his permit, his conditional use permit, so that he can sell trucks. We also discussed the new county fence at the courthouse. There was public comment on that. Our lawyer, Andy Griggs, had much to say on the issue with the people that were concerned. And hopefully, everything will be resolved with that. Outside of that, that was our meeting.
Any questions for David? I have to ask, Jane, you're in close proximity. Have you received any other complaints in regards to that?
No, once I told them that everything that could be looked into was looked into, and things were approved, the phone went quiet.
Okay, I just, you know, I did bring it up at the, when they were speaking at the plan commission meeting, but I haven't received any other complaints, but you live in in the near proximity.
Well, I have one neighbor, and she had a lot of concerns, and she brought a lot of valid concerns. I mean, especially since, if there's security concerns at the county, what are they? How come no one's been made aware of them? And, you know, she and Dave and I talked a couple of times too, and I guess it was hard to understand what the security concerns were. I mean, there's so many places that are still open and.
Okay, thank you for the info. Okay, moving on, finance committee.
Cheryl?
We did meet. We do have resolutions this evening for those activities that we did talk about. Now we'll get to those momentarily. One of the other additional pieces that we have looked at, it was in our old business, was what was happening with the old city hall. At this point in time, we have nothing to report on it. Or at our meeting, we had nothing to report on it, and I have known nothing at this point in time either. But we are keeping our eye on it, that we would like to sell that building. So if you know anyone that's interested, you know, it's there. New business, we're looking to get some lights changed over. It was brought up in utility, and it will be coming back to finance to make sure that we have the funding for that, to make those lights that change over that needs to be made. So with that, we will go on to our resolutions. First one is for the farm lease agreement with Randy and Jelaine Drager. See if I can get this to go where I want it. Resolution 642020, proof farm lease agreement with Randy and Jelaine Drager. Whereas the finance committee has reviewed the attached farm lease agreement with Randy and Jelaine Drager, covering a three-year period beginning January 12th, 2021, and ending April 30th, 2024. Whereas the finance committee recommends that the city of Juneau enter a farm lease agreement of 19.5 acres at $175 per acre, as shown in Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this 12th day of January 2021. A move for passage of resolution, Resolution 642020.
Sorry. Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further discussion?
This is property the city owns that we rent out for them to use. Question was raised whether a three-year term was appropriate or if we should look at it on a year-by-year basis. Finance committee said that we believe that the three-year contract would work for what we're looking for right now. And we would move forward with that.
Approximately 19 acres, and we did instigate a $25 increase. Any questions, comments? Roll call, vote please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evan.
Aye.
Fuddy.
Aye.
Grattan.
Aye.
Resolution 642020 is passed.
Whenever we do a project with MSA, and particularly those that are handled via CDBG projects, there's always fees that are incurred with that, and this next resolution is in relation to that. The breakdown of this, it's a total of $34,200. $7,500 of it is for the CDBG application. $26,700 is for CDBG administration. And it helps with filing all the paperwork appropriately for federal government requirements and. and allow Sean to do his city business rather than handling just that project for us. So, Resolution 652020, approve MSA agreement for CDVG-CLPF application for Highland Street project. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed the agreement with MSA to provide services for the preparation of an application for a CDVG-CL-PF grant to the Department of Administration, preliminary engineering technical funding support, CDV administration, wage rate monitoring for the Highland Street project. Whereas the Finance Committee recommends approving the agreement with MSA for $34,200 in professional services, as shown in Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation, passed by the Common Council of the City of Juno this 12th day of January 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 652020. Second?
Motion by Brown, second by Booty. Any further discussion? Mike, can you tell us what they all do for that kind of money?
Even though this money is administered to the State Bureau of Department of Administration, it originated as federal money. So, as you can imagine, with any federal project or money grant program, there's a lot of bureaucracy involved. It includes proper record-keeping, management of funds into proper accounts, um, equal employment opportunity regulations, federal wage rate monitoring. The whole slew of things that kind of go along with the free money that we're, we're getting, so. If anybody's got any questions beyond that, that's kind of the general overview.
Any other questions? Done. Roll call, Wuplet.
Groton.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Groton.
Aye.
Schuster. Aye. Resolution 652020 is passed.
Resolution 662020, approve setting fee for permit of placement of portable storage container or dumpster. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed the recommendation from Plan Commission to set a fee for a permit of placement of portable storage container and dumpster. Whereas the Finance Committee recommends approving to set the fee at $20 per permit. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation, passed by the Common Council of the City of Juno this 12th day of January 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 662020.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Groton. Any further discussion?
We've learned that some communities have a much larger permit fee. So, um, this is definitely um, within reason for what we wanted to do and to be able to keep an eye on those placements of portable storage containers and dumpsters.
Anything you want to add, Dave?
Yeah, we worked long and hard at this, looking at all those different prices. Some of the communities, their price was so high, it would deter someone from using them. And we didn't want to do that. Uh, when someone needs a dumpster, that they're already spending a lot of money doing repairs and maintenance on their home. So, this allows uh, a way for a person to track when the dumpster came, how long it is, so it fits all the rules that are on the books, so that you know when it should go away, that kind of thing.
The storage pods, we had reports when we researched, they ran from a hundred to a thousand dollars a month in some communities to be, for a permit to place a storage pod on there. So, we thought this was a very modest fee to be able to track what's going on in the community and hopefully, uh, this is for a six-month period too, by the way, so it's not by the month. So, this is a real deal compared to what most communities are, are charging for placing a dumpster or a storage pod on their properties, so.
So, with this ordinance, it follows the application for this dumpster. Are we setting a fee in the ordinance? Or what is the purpose of having the ordinance 261?
The ordinance is just going to be on the back of the um, application.
Okay, because it has guidelines?
Yeah.
Right. Any other questions? Roll call, Wuplet, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Groton.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 662020 is passed.
Resolution 672020 has to do with our city fees and the schedule that we have. Um, Sean has been helping make sure that that is consistent. And uh, we will be continuing to look at those fees and see if the ordinances, we can take it out that it says it's specific within an ordinance that it needs to be this dollar amount. Because as we all know, cost of living, the cost of servicing those type of things does change. But at this point in time, we wanted to go on record to say, this, these are the fees that we have. This is where they stand. And moving forward, so that it is public information to whoever might need to know what fees are. So, Resolution 672020, approve 2021 city fee schedule. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed updating the city fee schedule for 2021. And whereas the Finance Committee recommends approving the new fee schedule, as shown in Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation, passed by the Common Council of the City of Juno this 12th day of January 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 672020. Second?
Motion by Brown, second by Booty. Any further discussion? Questions or comments?
Sean, correct me if I'm wrong. The only fee that was added to this or changed for this coming year at this point in time is the dumpster and container permit fee, correct?
That is correct. We also did include on this fee schedule the rental rates for a community center while we, while the city as a whole rents out. Um, again, those will become, I want to say, nullified once we get another DC, but it won't come to fruition if, once that time comes.
Very good. Roll call, Wuplet, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Groton.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 672020 is passed.
This next resolution is because our community center is not rented out right now to a sole proprietor to have a business there. We have had um, people come to us and say, hey, they'd like to rent the community center. We'd like to have the bar service. What can you do for us? And, well, we can rent out the community center, but we can't provide bar service for you. And trying to find a way to um, work through that. And so, it was discussed within our committee. We had given some directive to Sean to continue to advertise for us, particularly reaching out to community colleges that may have food service programs around the state, not just in Dash County, but around the state, to say, hey, this is available. But in the meantime, we um, thought about, okay, would Jason White Catering be interested in, in doing this? He has his license. And so, this is because of that, this resolution is moving to us here. Resolution 682020, approve community center bar contract with Jason White Catering. Whereas the Common Council agreed to mutually terminate the community center lease in December 2020 with Jason White Catering. Whereas the Recreation Department is now booking events at the community center. Whereas the city is not allowed by state to sell alcohol. Whereas the city has discussed with Jason White Catering to serve alcohol at community center events, which request a bar. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed the terms of the contract with Jason White Catering and recommends approving a month-to-month contract, as shown in Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation, passed by the Common Council of the City of Juno this 12th day of January 2021. I move for passage of Resolution 682020.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Groton. Further discussion? I think the committee and myself felt that any form of activity down there right now, it's been a, a struggle now with COVID to attract another proprietor to run the, the center. I, my biggest fear was that once you have repeat customers that have been using the center year after year, if you don't do something to, to keep them coming, they're going to find a different venue, and then you're going to lose that clientele. And that was one thing we had going when we did have a change of proprietors. At least there was some guarantee that from the first month, there was going to be some activity there, that he was going to be able to make a few dollars off of and what have you. And uh, this, we're just hoping that, like I said, we don't lose the, the repeat clientele that we already have for years. And Jason's license will go up until spring of the year. He's already got that paid for and invested. And I know he has some excess inventory that he's probably willing to get rid of too. So, this gives him an opportunity to uh, to uh, use up some of that as well, so. Any other question?
I don't believe so, other than I think Jason was happy to participate this way. I believe it was his first desire to get out of it in the first place. And that keeps us, him active and, and looking still.
Yeah, for those that don't know, Jason is and, has had some ongoing health problems. And it's really starting to come to a head where he's got to uh, head it back off from this daily grind, I guess I'd call it, so. So, anyway, any other questions? Done. Roll call, Wuplet.
Brown.
Aye.
Groton.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution 682020 is passed.
And that's all I have from Finance.
Thank you. First now, we didn't have a meeting, so there's no report. Public safety, done.
Well, we did not have a meeting yet either. But I do have the second reading of ordinance 2252-2020. Ordinance 262-2020, City of Juno, Common Council. Ordinance 28 subsection, print 48, print 49, ordinance 10.8.060, print D, the City of Juno, parking, stopping, and standing regulated. Common Council of the City of Juno ordains ordinance 10.08.060, print D, print 48, and print 49, regulating parking on the city streets in the City of Juno to read as follows. 10.08.060, that's parking, stopping, and standing regulated. B, no parking anytime. There shall be no parking of any vehicle upon the following streets or portions of streets except subsections, print D, print 8, print B, print 16, and print D, print 31 of this section, 2A. 48, on the east side of South Fairfield Avenue, from intersection of Doug, West Kin Street, 440 feet north of South Fairfield Avenue, 156 feet to the north shall be no parking. 49, on the west side of South Fairfield Avenue in the south driveway at 561 South Fairfield Avenue, there should be no parking 34 feet to the south and 34 feet to the north of the south driveway. Second reading, January 12, 2021.
If this time, I need to entertain a motion to pass ordinance number 2622020, this is the second.
I make the motion pass ordinance 262-2020.
Second?
Second by Schuster, second by Booty. Further discussion?
This was just basically so they can get their semis into the loading dock. And they didn't need cars parked along the street there, so their semis could back into the loading dock, so. It has been kind of roped off in and parking there to employees right now, but they like some signage up there so other people won't park there, so. Because they're pretty busy up there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's uh, a fairly wide street, but when you've got semis coming in and out of there, that radius has to bend pretty wide, and it really restricts that turning radius when you have cars parked on the east side of the street there. So, either going south or going north, they still have to make pretty wide bends so that the, the wheels aren't jumping over the curbs, so.
And I think they're working on more parking inside their parking lot for the facility too.
Yes, and they're also uh, partnering with uh, Stewie Glander there to get some, some off-street parking right now during winter months on his parcel to the north, so. Any further discussion? Done. Roll call, Wuplet, please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Booty.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Groton.
Aye.
And that's all I got for public safety. Ordinance 2622020 is passed. Public works, Dave?
We did not need.
Cable TV?
No meeting, no report.
CDA, we did not have a meeting. We did have a meeting. Basically, we all talked about, basically uh, without going Gail Amsler, or with uh, outgoing director Gail Amsler. Um, our new director, Seamus, was uh, they both shared their thoughts and about the programs for the future, what have you. We thank Gail for her many years of service. Um, I think uh, Seamus is going to be a good addition. Uh, he's got a lot of fresh ideas and what have you, but yet willing to keep the programs running that Gail had in place there. I think we kind of went over the, the winter programs, what, what's going on down there right now. And of course, they're all COVID-conscious on how they, how the kids use youth basketball is being handled and only allowing so many spectators per family and what have you. You know, that's hard to write white, but I mean, they're doing the best they can. And kids seem to be doing well. We've got some dedicated uh, parents in the community that uh, really grabbed a hold of that basketball program and worked well with the kids, so we'd like to thank them as well. And that was pretty much it. I mean, uh, one thing Seamus got, he's kind of got a background in, in um, working for the city water to town as far as securing grants and what have you, or at least he's knowledgeable on what you have to do to secure grants. And he's got some thoughts and things for improvements for the department, who is going to offer, so hopefully he's successful. So, that's for that. Moving on, Utility Report, but Common Council.
Yeah, we met last week. We met and welcomed Lori, Lori Ryanne to the utility team. She will be replacing Alice as utility accountant when Alice retires in a few months. We were joined by a phone conference by Matt Cassillo of MSA, who updated us on plans for a future upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant. His presentation projected future flows and modes for the next 20 years, pointing out deficiencies in our current plant with possible solutions. And next step is determining costs for various upgrades and exploring sources of funding, including grants. Nick Coleman reported that poles are being replaced along the trail to the wastewater treatment plant, and that trees are being trimmed. Another street light was struck by average truck in the place. Um, Cheryl talked about the transformer replacement that's needed. Um, Tim Gazner reported that they're still having problems with flushable wipes, climbing pipes. DNR is testing the corrosive, corrosiveness of our well water. Um, there was complaint of a chlorine smell in the water, and that has been rectified. Um, the phosphorus analyzer out of the plant has been sent in to be repaired, repaired and should be replaced. And they're hoping, I think they can use the DNR replacement fund to do that. Utility President Bob Offeld reported on the WPPI budget meeting and talked about training classes that are available. And lastly, the mayor stressed that we need to keep progress going on contract talks would sense him. And that was about that meeting.
Any questions?
I don't know if we really touched. Cheryl kind of alluded to the, the streetlight program there. Um, we do have some, some funds from our um, council that, that uh, WPPI, Community Block Grant Funds, the Community Development Funds, not Block Grant Funds. Uh, there are some dollars that um, that WPPI matches the utility and see how the streetlights that we're talking about improve, improving are actually city-owned streetlights. We can funnel that money from those accounts through the CDA, back to the city for changing out. The streetlights that would go along Mill Street
The streetlights that would go along Mill Street and the one block, or two blocks of West Oak Grove Street, East Oak Grove Street, excuse me. They're actually currently meters by the, next to the post office there, and they run on a higher four hundred and eighty volt voltage. Nick has been trying to keep things nursing along there because he's getting some high temperature readings on that four hundred and eighty volt transformer. He does not want to invest in another one of those transformers because these new LED lights would run at two forty volt. So that's basically the story of that. So some of these dollars that we needed over and above what WPPI and the utility are providing, are unbudgeted dollars, which the Finance Committee was looking at supplementing to make this happen. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on to your business tonight. New business, we have provincial licenses for Dela Shopee and Heather Floor. Your motion approved?
So moved.
Motion by Fuddy. Second by Schuster. Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried. We have regular bartender license for twenty-twenty expires June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, also for Dela Shopee and Heather Floor. Motion by Schuster, second by Fuddy. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried. No other business? I entertain a motion, your turn?
Motion by Schuster.
Motion by Schuster, second by Brown, your turn. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thank you.